Good evening. About time.
I got six to four.
Yep.
We have a form, this will call the meeting order. Justin.
Justin's not coming. I have not heard from Janelle, so I'm assuming she's still coming.
Need the approval of the agenda?
Um, and I don't know if this goes, I, this doesn't go on the agenda. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Cindy, second by Randy. Who has the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Approve of the consent agenda.
Here's where I have an item to change. Nobody caught this, but the, the minutes that you're approving are for October 14th, not September 9th.
And that's a typical error?
Yeah, that's a typical error, Verdi. It's a typical error. I'm hoping that's the only one I made tonight.
With that change, I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jane, second by Cindy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Talk about the sheriff's report down on the council talks.
Yeah.
Okay. Public thing?
Yeah.
Let's see if that's Lori coming around the corner.
Did you see the sheriff's report? Did you see it?
It was just a one-page summary, and that's why I'm going to ask that we get the full thing again. I know it's kind of a hassle to print out, but...
There she is!
Yes, I am, I'm sorry.
We had a preview of back-to-back meetings tonight. Here, have a chair.
Thank you.
We were just about to call the public meeting to order, so we're really glad you're here.
Ah, it's good timing, wasn't it?
Because I didn't, I didn't look through all this because I was thinking you were gonna be here.
Call you when I'm late, though.
Ah, call me when I'm late?
This is Lori Gilbert and, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Carla Janney.
Carla Janney. With Region 12.
You need to be careful with that pen.
You like that pen? You can have that pen.
I can do my pocket real quickly.
Yeah, I know, I'm running it. It's probably just mine.
As I said, I put mine in my pocket this morning and it dropped there.
So is public hearing started, or?
He's just gonna call it to order now, so we'll divert it.
Okay, you got the floor? Is that right?
Call the public meeting to order and then give it to her.
Oh, what do we got here? The public hearing shall come to order on the matter of the housing project grant application. Okay.
Um, what the city is proposing to do with an application submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Authority is to apply for $150,000 for a grant. What that grant will do is rehab for homes. Is my understanding that the city will commit to a match of $2,000 per project, so a total of $8,000. The, um, before we even started this, this application process, we sent out a grant application survey and we received, I'm sorry, how many did we receive?
I don't know. You had some come to you and I mailed you six or seven.
I think we had about 25, let's say 25 applicant, pre-interest applications that were submitted. Because of the size of Auburn, 25 residents of Auburn who owned their home that indicated interest.
They were interested, yes.
Yes.
They have to own their home?
They have to own their home. It cannot be bought on contract. They have to have their taxes paid, their property taxes paid. They have to have house insurance, property insurance, and their utilities have to be current for at least three months. Now, when, 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 on December 11th, the application will be submitted for a total of $160,000. $10,000 of that is for the grant administration to execute the program.
Um, so Region 12 gets the admin, admin money, right? The Region 12 has signed a contract with the city.
The average grant per household will really be approximately $25,000 to $30,000. I am applying for the maximum amount, just so we may be able to, not knowing which houses we're going to assist and how much, you know, how much funds would it would take to bring that house up to the Iowa minimum rehab standards. The Iowa minimum rehab standards is, uh, standards that the state brings to us to follow, and that means we look at the whole property. We look at the roof, the windows, the siding, the mechanics of the house, the, you know, the heating and AC, the plumbing, making sure that the house is energy efficient and virtually maintenance-free and a good, safe home for that family. Also included in that program are lead-safe practices, which means because of any house built before 1978, we pretty much assume that there is lead-based paint. And myself, Carla, and two other staff in our office are certified with the state to do testing for lead-based paint. We assume that there is lead-based paint and we go through the motions to, in our bidding process, to make sure those are brought to a safe condition by the time the project is through.
Lori, do we know how many of these 25 that expressed interest are actually eligible? Or do you make that determination, or how do we get it down to the four that...
What we do is, once you get, once, once you get the application, once you get the grant funds, then what we do is, after we sign all the contracts, do the environmental review. That takes a couple of months. But, once we start that process, we also advertise to all the families in, in Auburn, as well as send a letter to those that submitted the pre-application. And we'll give them what the property standards are, because we cannot assist anybody whose, whose house is, is a total mess and the yard is junky, so that we try and give them pre-warning, so they can clean those things up. That's kinda nice. And we give them a time span to apply to the program, a formal application. We usually give, leave that pool or that application period open for a month. We take those applications received in that month, we do all the income verification, determine if they're income-eligible, then we check, do all the tests. Are they, do they have their utilities paid? Do they have their property tax paid? Do they have their insurance coverage on their house? And then, what we do is we rank them. We rank them if they're, they get a point if they're senior citizens. They get a point if they have children under six. They get a point if they're handicapped. They get a point depending on, one or two points depending on how low of income they are, based on the, the average. I brought the income limits here. So for the city of, for Sapp County, it would be, a family of four cannot make more than $47,000 for 40. Pretty, pretty generous. But if they make $20,000, they would probably get a couple of points for being lower income. There are also deducted points if they have assets over $20,000. Just to be fair.
Does that include a car?
No, no, it basically is liquid assets.
Okay.
Something that they should cash in.
Cash in the bank?
Cash in the bank, CDs, stocks.
Mm-hmm.
Stocks.
I missed something. You said, "A senior citizen with children under six"?
That, I see if there... Why, are you trying to tell us something?
Not yet.
Do you do anything with asbestos, or anything like that, if you have all this fall of it?
Yes, with asbestos, there have been cases where we'll come across that if it's on the siding or if we know that it's in, in the house. We'll have the asbestos checked. We're mostly concerned about the lead-based paint. But if it's obvious, if it's a stockpile house and we want it cited and we can either have it tested or we can assume that it's asbestos, we would go out and get a special bid to get the asbestos removed by an abatement contractor. So, once we got that pool of four people, four families, we'll meet with them here, explain the program, and then we'll start our inspection process. We'll inspect their houses, write up the specifications, and have what's called a contractor walkthrough. We will meet, and we'll publicize it, we have to publicize, we have to go through federal procurement. So we'll publicize, we're meeting at this address on this date at this time with, you know, we don't say the family's name, people can figure it out. And then, we will meet all interested contractors at that house and we'll go through the bid packet. Contractors have to be registered with the state of Iowa, have insurance, and be lead-certified. As far as being able to work with not lead-abatement, lead, lead re, what is that called?
Lead safety.
Yeah, lead safety work practices for the rehab. Once we have that, we put in the bids, we give them two weeks to turn in a bid. We go ahead and once we get the bids, contact the homer, the homeowner, if they accept the bids, then we prepare the paperwork and we sign contracts and the work begins. We monitor the project all the way to the end. So...
If you have a family that falls out, withdraws at any point in that process, the latter, after the initial selection of four, do you have a waiting list? Or do you have, do you rank the applicants?
We rank, yes.
So you could pull someone from the next?
We pull the next one up. We rank all of them. We rank, we, we do the verification. It, it's interesting. We might start out with 20 actual applications, even though we got 25. That's why we always apply for like one-third or, you know, less than what we got, because, because it's amazing, once it gets through, how people will not turn in their paperwork. Or we'll find out they own their house on contract, they're buying their house on contract. We can't help them with that. And, you know, because of one in, into window or another, they either drop out or they don't return their paperwork.
That doesn't mean they need to buy, they have their house without a lien. It says that it has to be, they have to own it.
Exactly. They have to be buying it from a bank, from, with a, with a conventional mortgage. Doesn't have, you know, it can be, any type of a mortgage, it has to be a mortgage, not a land contract. What else can I answer for you? I need to make sure all these points, all these minutes need to be included too, because they're very specific about what's in the minutes for the application. All of the households that benefit from federal funds will meet income-eligible test. That's 80% of meeting income. That's what you got there, is that 80% line mark, right here.
The dark line.
The dark line, yes. Um, we talked about how the Iowa minimum rehab standards will be met and houses will be tested. When, when, if there's a house that we, mostly what we have to test is if we replace the windows. That's a common rehab practice. We'll replace the windows, because that may be the biggest area where we might disturb lead-based paint. Then, once the contract, we actually relocate the family out of the house. Have them stay at mom's or down the road at a hotel or someplace. And then, once the contractor is done, we do a test and as long as it comes back clear, excuse me, then, then the whole family can move back in. The construction won't be done, but at least that part of the construction will. All of that has, has historically taken one week. So we move family out on Sunday night or Monday morning. They're back in by Friday afternoon, under best circumstances. The program pays for the relocation.
But you test the home first to find out if there is indeed lead-based paint?
We don't test it first. We assume. We could test. There have been times when I tested it, just because it saves some money and it saves some hassle relocating the family. So what I'll do, we do have an XRF machine to test lead-based paint. And, so I would go, if, if the house is built after 1950, between 1950 and 1978, and you can kinda tell by looking at it that it might not be. So most likely, the times I would test it would be when it would be to prove it wasn't lead-based paint. Otherwise, we just assume. We are applying for four projects. Again, the maximum amount for each project, well, the, the budget for each project is $37,500. We do not expect to spend that much on each house. But, not knowing which houses, again, we apply for the maximum amount of assistance. So hopefully, we'll be able to tweak out one more project. Even though your match is 2,000, you know, when you considered your match, you consider 2,000 per project, total of 8,000. If we do five projects, you're, you do not have to provide any more match.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just once, that, that 8,000 is your commitment.
So that, that's the federal requirement of 37,500?
Is the maximum amount that you've, yes, is, is the federal amount that you, you cannot exceed that with federal funds.
Well, can you do this thing every year, or every so many years?
Sure you can. We'll do it and we'll get it done real quick. You'll be a big success and we'll apply again.
I just carry it.
No, hopefully that will, that will work out well.
But it's not grant for granted. People need to pay it back, but it's, it's...
This is all grant. It's a grant. Thank you for bringing that up. Good point, Jane. It's like, that's right. It is a five-year forgivable lien. 20% is forgiven each year. Now, here's the other kicker. We might put in $30,000 of rehabilitation, hard construction cost. But if 5,000 is for the lead-safe work practices, which actually pays for the windows, their lien is only 25,000. So, and then, so that would be forgiven in 5,000, approximately 5,000 a year.
Because the goal is, of course, to get houses safer and conducive, healthy.
It, the goals of the program are to provide safe, decent housing for your residents, improve the neighborhoods, and increase tax base. Now, if any money is, say a family gets 30,000, 25,000, and in three years they sell their home, then the proceeds should come, if there are any proceeds to be paid back to this, to, for that grant, will go to the city. The city can keep those proceeds for general, for your general budget line item, unless you get more than $25,000 in a year. Then it has to go back towards housing.
So if they sell that within, like, if they, it's five-year forgivable law lien. So if they sell that within three years, you're saying that two years of that money will come back?
Should come back.
To the city? You guys don't get it at all, or the government don't get it?
No. It, it goes back to the city. The lien will be in the city's name.
It's a federal government investment in rural communities, basically. Now, for the contractors, do they also bid the supplies, the windows and that sort of thing? Or is it just for their labor that they're, or do you handle the procurement of the supplies, the materials?
When we put it out for bid, we have, we want one general contractor bidding suppliers, subs, and labor. He will be responsible for the whole project.
Materials and labor.
I think that's all on my notes, but you can incorporate in your, in your minutes and then get signed? Because we have plenty of time to get these back.
Okay.
Perfect.
Suppose a house built in 1893 disqualified?
Nope. Nope.
Maybe your income. Maybe your income. There you go, Verdi. You're too wealthy.
Why you need an extra bedroom for that child under six?
I think there's five in that house, with one bedroom.
So what do we need to do? Do we need to, do you need a motion? Are we've already, basically...
First thing you need to do is close the public hearing, and then you have a resolution in front of you, Resolution 13-24. And I don't know if I printed you guys another copy. I did email it to you, so...
Oh, he's got one.
And you got five minutes.
Oh, Lori, question for you, though. The LMI survey.
I, 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 thank you. I contacted Rick and Joe and they are hashing it out. They think it's possible. We think we have somebody that would love to have some time doing that. Would, and then it would just basically, I guess, be calling, I mean, we need a list of the residents in town. Because we don't want to be calling people out of the country.
Right. And I, we can do that through our utility records.
Perfect. So if we could get those phone numbers, because we can do it by phone, if we could get those phone records and I, as soon as I hear back from, I emailed Rick right away this morning. And I think I'll probably hear back from him tomorrow.
Cost for the city?
That's what he's considering.
Okay. What we're talking about is, as part of this application, we have to do a low and moderate income survey. I think what I read here said we could use 2,000 numbers, that last survey from 2,000, but our low and moderate income percentage is only 29%.
And it has to be over 51%?
Yeah. It's so, and I think our town has changed that much since then, that it's worth doing the survey.
Yes.
But we have to have an 80% participation rate in this survey, and I'm real sure that me making phone calls is not gonna get that done.
I don't think, even if the council members did, I don't think they would.
That's why I asked Lori if Region 12 could do that survey for us.
And basically, it's like, hello, we would, we're doing, we're helping, assisting the city with an application for housing rehabilitation. And, well, how many are in your family? And do you make less than this, this, or this, or this? You know, it, it's, it's not, how much do you make? It's, do you make less than this?
Right.
And...
Tell them it's aggregate information, of course, and it won't be analyzed.
Right, right.
And that it's for the benefit of the city, as well as them, as an individual property owner.
And I can put it in the newsletter that this is gonna happen, but I'm just...
It would happen in the next couple of days. Can I get ahold of you? And, and, I mean, you not knowing how much it's gonna, I, I don't know how much it's gonna cost. How many, how much would it cost? There's 143 households in the city.
Yeah.
Give or take a few. How much time will it take to call each of those?
I think you're probably closer, if we get right down to it, to probably 125, 120 or 25.
And then 80% of those, because they can...
Oh, really? Okay, I have the calculator. That's 100 phone calls. It's 100 people that have to answer. We've never done, I mean, I was surprised when she said we had 25 from Auburn that returned the pre-application survey.
I'm guessing. I forgot to bring the spreadsheet. And I didn't send you the spreadsheet, did I? I apologize. I will tomorrow.
But, so...
Okay, so, so what Rick's saying is, they might, Region 12 might be able to handle this survey, but there'll be a price on it.
Right.
Yeah, it'll take shop time.
And they'll get back to us and let us know what that would be.
Right. We have time. When is the next time you're gonna meet?
Not till December 9th.
We would need to know, we'd need to start right away if we're gonna do this. I don't know what he, I know how much that particular person gets an hour, but I would, you know, then there's the phone.
Could you give us a ballpark, what you think of it?
I don't think it can be less than, I mean, more than 200.
Well, if that's it.
Yeah, that's my, yeah.
I mean, you guys are gonna spend more on my time to do this.
Can you give me a range from two to three? I mean, I won't, you know, that way if I, but I don't think it, it will be more than 200.
For 100 phone calls, it shouldn't be?
No, it shouldn't be.
But, do you want a motion at this point?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
So...
We're still in public hearing, so...
Oh, we have...
Yeah. We haven't closed that yet.
Any more discussion on the public hearing? Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Aye. Second?
Okay, Randy and Jane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we get into the action item. Approve the Region 12, Resolution 13-24.
I'll make the motion to approve this Resolution number 13-24.
Okay, motion by Cindy.
Second?
Seconded by Jane. Okay, I noticed, um, right here says at least four families, and you said four families. And the city pledged 10,000, you said 8,000.
This says 8,000.
Mine says 10,000.
This is it?
Change it to eight, because the one he's gonna sign says eight.
Okay.
I just happened to see that, too.
I printed this one off, too, that said 10,000, so...
It was probably the example I gave her, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay, any further discussion on the resolution? Okay, motion?
I already made one.
Oh, you did?
Except this, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. All you need to vote, Verdi.
Call the vote.
You would second it, did you? Well, that was to close the meeting, wasn't it?
No.
Oh, that was the one.
That was the one that said vote.
You're okay, Verdi.
What time is it?
All those in favor?
Close that again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Now you can make your motion about the LMI survey.
Verdi, I'd like to make a motion on doing the LMI study or doing the telephone call and let Region 12 survey our residents for updated information on income, family size, that sort of thing. Whatever is necessary for the application. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Randy and Cindy seconded.
Okay.
That works.
I double second.
Okay, now, how are we gonna roll this phone call tree?
All those in favor?
No, no, no. How is this gonna be happening now? Who's doing what?
Region 12 will do the survey.
Or you're the caller?
Yeah, that's part of, what I, maybe I didn't make it clear in my motion. My motion is to allow Region 12, she gave us a ballpark figure around $200, $200 to $300, hopefully more around $200 to call and...
But your motion does not include the number?
No, no.
Thank you.
But we all have that general understanding.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are we ready to go on now?
You'll let us know when it seems. Uh, I have one more. Are you, are you, are you done with me?
If you have one more, go for it.
This might be in your packet, but this is the Community and Housing Needs Assessment.
No, I haven't seen this.
Okay. Oops, sorry. There should be enough. You got one? Okay. And basically, this is a requirement of the application. And I just kinda pulled together the general stuff that some cities say. But it is your opportunity as a city to expound on it or eliminate anything. Like, "Community Development Housing Needs of LMI Persons: Expand Affordable Housing Options for Low to Moderate Income. Advertise the availability of such housing to Low and Moderate Income Persons." Is there any other needs that you see for LMI persons in your community? LMI meaning low to moderate income.
I wonder who Ellen was.
Right, that's Ellen. So I don't know, too.
There it is.
Yep, low to moderate income. That's that 80% that you have on your chart, so... And, and any of that can include any infrastructure that you're looking at or anything else. Or it can be just as this.
Well, are you asking this for, as part of the survey, you're saying? That we would talk this to them, or?
No.
I liked the Lori when you said something about expanding or increasing the tax base. I mean, it actually capitalizes the city better, in my opinion. So, I mean, I don't know if you're... So, I mean, I don't know if you're, if you're trying to think of, of what we put in the grant application, or if you're saying this would be part of the survey.
This actually is part of the grant application.
Okay.
And, and so, and, and I do have it as one of the factors on, or the objectives of expanding on the tax base, et cetera. This is more of a community, it's, like it says, Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment. What do you see needing for your community?
I think more people need to own their home in Auburn.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I agree. That would be a plus for Auburn.
Now, do you think that would be for everybody, or just for LMI?
I think that would be especially for LMI.
Okay.
That kind of sort of answers that question.
So, you could, how about explore?
Right.
Explore homeowner opportunities. Homeowner development.
Develop more homeowner opportunities.
Okay.
Basically, create more.
Create more.
Home...
We have a lot of rental houses in town, you know?
Okay, I'll change this around when I, when I write it. But you want to explore development opportunities to...
Create more opportunities for owner-owned, or whatever, owned houses.
Okay.
Because what happens, Lori, is we get a, we get a lot of... We get a transient community because there's a lot of rentals. So, you don't get investment in the, in the local community. It's not the, you know, you hear it a lot. It's not the same little town that it used to be because, because of that. So, however's the best way to communicate that. That's what we're talking about. It creates investment in the community, community activities, support. When they own the home here.
Then you should be interested in our Regional Downpayment Assistance Program.
I think we're already a part of that.
I just sent the letter out.
Oh, well, we did one of those.
We did, but that, that was one step...
Is there another one of those? You don't even know what we're doing here.
Scary.
We're already doing it. You don't even know, nobody told you?
This, this is a new application this year.
A new one?
A new one. So, that would be one you're... You could talk about at your next city council meeting.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't go in until January.
Okay, good.
What's the name of this, Verdi?
It is the Home Downpayment Assistance Program, which is nice because it provides down payment along with rehabilitation. So, it's this rehab program in addition to down payment. I'm asking for $25, $25, $2,500 per project, but the city can commit to a maximum number of projects. Last time we had this, we had 12 communities involved. And everybody, you know, there was a range from anywhere from one project up to 10 projects. And it was first come, first served. We do not save money. We do not save any funds for any cities. It's just first come, first served. But it's an opportunity for homebuyer.
And I'm sure there's separate eligibility requirements for that.
Same requirements.
That's the same thing, yeah.
Yep, same, same requirements as that income. They just have to have, be able to get conventional financing. Okay. So, so that would be, that's what we could put is, is a, as, as part of a plan or potential activity would be is to investigate, because it isn't happening yet, investigate the regional down payment program. So, for other community development and housing needs, I have rehabilitation and expansion of housing in the community. Encourage businesses to locate, revitalize the community. These are all pretty facey boilerplate, but they seem to fit, you know? Demolish vacant dilapidated houses, which we're working on. Attract more jobs, which would go along with the businesses. And attract business entrepreneurs. Is, do you want to expand on any of that? Take any of it out? Add anything else?
I don't know, I think we'll cover it as well as anything. I was trying to think of, you know, like the... Like all the vegetation that we put out there, that kind of the community profile. When you have rehab houses, when you have, I mean, that shouts investment to people. We have a high traffic.
You do?
You know, anything that we can send a message that we're doing well, and we care about what we look like, and inside and out, kind of thing. I don't know how you put that in words, but... Anyway, I think those, those four or five are, cover a lot of it.
Encourage curb appeal for, for...
What's the latest catchphrase?
I think it's curb appeal.
Is it?
Yes.
It's my song. I said, "GTV," curb appeal. Okay.
But I'll play with that a little bit. Carla will help me play with it a little bit, and then we'll get what you mean. We both know what you mean. We'll just get it into the right words.
Build better houses.
They will come. From home, yeah.
Got it.
Plan or potential activities. Apply for the CTVG Owner Occupied Rehab Program, which you are. Initiate Economic Development and Planning Initiative. I don't know what that means. It's kind of a copy of somebody else's, so... But if that works for you, it's good for me. Continue to improve and restore streets.
Definitely.
Definitely, okay. And pursue funding sources to demolish vacant dilapidating housing. Now, I don't know how many more you have that you have...
We have one more.
One more?
Big one. Have you had any, like, with that one? Oh, that's going to be an awful one.
And then, I will also add investigate or, or participate in the regional, regional down payment program. Does that all sound good?
Mm-hmm.
And number of residents participating?
Six, eight, nine.
Otherwise, alls I have is, I will explain the signature pages real quick. We have federal...
Before you go on, and this right here is part of the grant application.
Yes.
No further, I need it on this.
No.
Okay, so we're done with that part?
Yes. Okay, what you can get is the signatures now or later. Nancy, would be the federal assurance signature page. That's just saying that the city plans on following all rules and regulations for this federal grant.
Which one's that, Lori?
That one.
Uh-uh. Where are those two in it? Yeah, you think. No, that one I don't have.
Well, it should have been sent right about time is the disclosure update.
Okay, federal...
You see it? Federal Assurance.
Okay.
It's something that's got to be signed. I'll leave it here with you. You want to just get it signed and send it all back to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sure you want a copy of the resolution signed, too.
Yes, yes.
And I don't have the proof of publication yet, so...
Good, okay, yeah, that definitely I'll leave. The next thing is the applicant recipient disclosure update report. And this just is saying that, that it has the city's name, address, your social security number, your federal ID number, the amount of funds requested, which is $160,000. And both of the questions, Part 1 and Part 2, are no. So, that's all we need to fill in.
Oh, you've got those already.
Right. I've got that all filled in. You can take your time to look at it, and then, and then just let me know that that's got to be signed.
Yeah, this is our copy, yeah?
Sure.
Office committee, for signature?
Lori, $8,000, does that have to be set aside like an escrow? Or does that have to, do you have to have that in a certain separate account? Or for the city's portion?
What we, what happens is, is if we get the applicant, if we get the, if you get the grant, then what we'll have, do is sign a sub-recipient agreement with the city. That means that, that kind of allows Region 12, and it's worked so well for the last 15 years. It allows Region 12 to just pay the bills. And then, once a month, or every other month, we'll send you a bill for the grant amount. And then, at the same time, I'll prepare a draw. And Nancy will process that draw, turn it into state. When you get the money from state, send right Region 12 a check. The other part of that billing will be as accrued...
As cost or accrued?
As cost or accrued for your match. So, don't expect any billing until after, after July of next year.
Okay.
And it probably will be throughout the year. You'll get periodic billings until you've met your match. So... That's how we will work that, and it's worked very well. And then that way, when we have a monitoring from state, then we can bring all of the bookwork. And, and then hopefully, it will be less headache for Nancy. Minority impact. This is a questionnaire I filled out for you, Verdi. And it basically is part of the application, but you're certifying it. You don't have to sign it or anything. But it just says, "This proposed grant or policies will have a disproportionate impact on the minority." I put, "No." "This grant or programs or policies could be a disproportionate or unique negative impact." No. This, this, then on number three, "This proposed grant project, programs," that's how they have it written, "or policies are not expected to have a disproportionate or unique impact for, on minority persons." And I put, "Yes," because every, every homeowner in the City of Auburn will be eligible to apply. There won't be any, you know, there isn't any way we could discriminate anyway. So, that is just something that I said you certified. And I think that's it. Thank you, Verdi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you. Some more. We're still working with you with the, with the demo. And I think that's, did they do their...
They were supposed to be here for the asbestos... Well, the guy was here Friday afternoon for the asbestos abatement. Whether or not he finished it or not, I don't know, but...
Okay.
He came in Friday afternoon and was going up there, so...
Good, good. So, it's progressing. Fantastic. If you have any questions, please give me a call. I did not bring my, my business card, so... Thank you. But you have a good night.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Like I said, if any questions come up. But I'll try, and I should have an answer from Rick tomorrow morning.
That's awesome. I'm tickled you guys are going to handle that. I started reading that one, oh, no.
Thank you. All right, good night.
Good night.
Okay, continuing. Electric utility system conversion report from Allen Bogdanoff. We had a call for it.
I didn't get a chance to look at that. Is that a different report?
No, it's the same one you had last month. It's just, I'm going to get him on the phone, and you guys can talk to him and ask him questions.
Okay. Do they have any questions from that?
I'm sure we, we didn't really discuss it last month, remember? We just said, "Here it is," after we went through all the concrete plant. And I know you had some questions last month that I couldn't answer for you, so...
This one should have been here. These are electrician.
Oh, this is, this is specialty stuff. If you remember, this is, this is the report where he, he can do for us and convert, if we want to, convert to the 12.5, right? Okay? If we don't want to do that, this is still a plan to upgrade our system because the reconducting, you already approved the reconducting along the highway and along Walnut Street over here.
Right.
Okay? This would be to continue to do that, to put new lines in, and update our system so that we were, we could gain some efficiencies. And whether or not we go to a full conversion from the 41.6 to the 12.5 is, I mean, really, our system needs upgraded anyway. And whether we do that or not, really, and Ellen can explain this better than I can. We can do a lot of, putting in a lot of new conductors and, and doing a lot of that stuff without doing new transformers and completely going to the 12.5, but gain some efficiencies that way.
Nancy, would it be, would it be okay if we occurred this discussion? I mean, this is, this is future planning for the, for the December meeting? Because I guess, I, I have a few...
The only reason I brought it in tonight is because our December meeting is already looking long, and you know how long January is. So, if you want to, if you're comfortable maybe having to put this off till February, that's, that's okay. And Ellen, if you're...
Because we already decided, we already made the decision last month on the, the short-term schedule.
Right, right.
So, this, this is planning down the road, and maybe we could even talk about it among ourselves again during the January, February meetings, and...
If, if that's, if that's okay with you. Now, the, the only...
I agree with you.
The only time constraint that we have is, this consultant may not be working for another five years. So, the longer, if we want him to see us through our project, he's already retired and he may give this up, but I don't think he's going to give it up in the next three months, so... And he has completed his work for us under the original agreement that, you know, we agreed to have him advise us on that. It's mostly done. Did you hear from Mitch today at all? Are they still planning to come tomorrow?
They don't work today.
That's what I thought, too, so... So, okay.
So, he's, and this, Ellen's the person that helped us put together the RFP, right? Or, or no? Is Ellen the same person who helped us?
Ellen is the same person who helped us put together the requirements for hooking up the concrete plant and, and this reconducting that you approved last month.
Okay.
Okay, that was his scope of work.
Okay.
Okay? Okay? If, if we want him to go on with anything in this report, then there'll be a new scope of work developed and he has a cost estimate for that as well.
And we had a different consultant that helped us with the actual RFP request to buy your power.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, yes.
I'm good.
Yes. We've got a few too many consultants, I gotta tell you.
Do you want a motion, Verdi, to defer this until the February meeting? The discussion of this? This is longer.
Don't say February in case I can feel like we have, unless you really wanna put it off that long.
Defer to be somewhere or February. Yeah.
Defer to future.
Defer to at least.
One month.
Until the next meeting for discussion purposes.
Okay. Motion made to defer this at least until the next meeting? Is that right, Jane?
Yes, that's current house document.
Okay. Jane and Sandy, Alwood and Fingers, say aye.
Aye.
Jane?
Yes.
Aye, okay. Motion carried.
All right, give me one second to shoot him an email and tell him we're not gonna call him.
Okay. Can we talk about, can everybody just, about the upgrading of our present system on the 12.5?
Yes, that's the reconducting.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that part's already done.
Yeah. That's all.
Yeah. The other stuff is normal, orange stuff.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. He's sitting and waiting for us, so I wanted to. Um, the next thing is the progress update. Like I said, they're, we're hoping they're going to energize the transformer and get the metering in tomorrow. There could be a little issue with that. We'll have to get somebody else to put the metering in, because we're not sure what the REC is going to do, so. But hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have power to the concrete plant. Huh?
I think they're gonna put the meter in.
Okay.
Took that part, but to wait for something else.
Okay.
So you mean the city meter or, and it's just trickier because of the transformer part?
Well, the REC, the way I understand it, the REC does these installs differently and they put the disconnect right on the transformer, where municipals put the disconnect inside the building beyond the meter. And after last month's meeting, the REC guy come in here and said, "You don't need these pieces of equipment that you're going to order, 'cause we're gonna put a disconnect in and the disconnect's gonna be about $3,000." The metering stuff was 800, right? We had to order one more, I think it ended up being 1,300, the total metering stuff, and they wanted to do it this way. And I, so I emailed Alan and say, "Okay, give me the real dope here. What do we have to do?" And so that's how he explained it is, "REC's like to do it this way, municipals do it this way, and let's do it this way." And so we ordered this extra piece and told the REC that we weren't gonna buy their expensive disconnect. So that's why there's a little question about who's going to install it, but yeah.
But generally, we're, we're on target, and maybe that's too, too precise, but we're on target for about $15,000 to hook up the concrete plant to electricity.
It's gonna be real close. I, I don't know exactly what the REC bill's going to be, but yeah, it should be pretty close to that. The power supply proposals are out. I didn't count, but I think that John sent our request for proposal out to at least 10, if not 12 or 13 different companies. I have, I have a list and I didn't look at, look at it this afternoon, but it looks really good. He has requested that anybody who wants to make a proposal get to him, I think by the end of this week, with an, with an intent to do a proposal. And then the proposal should be, are due to him by December 2nd. So by next meeting, we won't be ready to approve anything, but we should have the next step in that whole process.
Would you send out to the council, the, the companies that would receive the proposals, that does 10, 15?
Um, I'll have to ask him. Some of that's a little proprietary until they decide to send us an intent.
Take just a list of, name of the companies and Mid-Am and whatever.
I'll check with him, Jane.
Okay.
They, they get a little funky about stuff like that, so I'll check with them.
I'd just like to know, I think the rest of you would, who would, who all received?
Actually, he found companies to send us to that I'd never heard of, so.
We have a power supply?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Build water usage review. And that's the sheet here.
No, I have one at here, but it's two sheets.
I just put this together really quickly. I am struggling with, with doing a really accurate analysis. And as I, as I thought through the, the process, it seemed that the most accurate analysis for our purposes tonight being says, "We're really, we're really only have about four full months of data with the new meters. It's a little soon to be able to give you anything really, really concrete." So I went back and in the first column, you will see the actual billed meters from the utility billing program. Now, that's not processed amount of gallons that go through the water plant. This is what we build through the meters to our customers.
Citywide.
Citywide, everybody included. And you can see the numbers for each of the months through all of calendar year 2012. Okay? The next column then is billed gallons for 2013, citywide, total month, through the meters, through the billing program. Now, I noted May, June, and July, because those are the months that we spent installing new meters. And I will tell you that when we changed out those meters and we plugged in the final reading on the old meter, there were customers that were going to get billed for millions of gallons. There were customers that were going to get billed for hundreds of thousands of gallons. And it was not every customer, but it was a big percentage of them. And so what I did at that meter changeout was I went back to their, what the computer told me was their average usage for a month, and I billed that last final changeout for their average usage. Okay? So those months, I mean, you can't really compare those, because we were in limbo and, and the, the new meter readings were, were taking into account some of those average usages that I was using, okay? The first month that we really have good data is the month of August. And you'll see in 2012, we billed out 517,000 gallons, and in 2013, we billed out 542,500 gallons. But we also had a concrete plant that came online for the first time and was using more water and was not included in any of these earlier numbers, so I took his billed usage out. So we billed out to our customers, other than the concrete plant, 525,000 gallons. And that increased our billed usage by 2% that month. I did the same thing for September. If you'll notice, it was 411, almost 412,000 gallons we billed in 2012, and 445,000 in 2013, with the new meters, an increase of 7.5%. October went from 398,000 in 2012 to 482,000 in 2013, an increase of 17.5%.
Because you're backing out the concrete.
I'm backing out the concrete plant for the purpose of comparison. I mean, if I left the concrete plant in there, those numbers, those percentages would be much higher, but I don't think that's inaccurate.
Right.
I mean, he's a heavy, 80,000 gallons on average is a big user in Auburn and November's usage went back down, but it still increased 6% over a year ago. And I think, you know, we were all aware when, when the new meters were authorized that the biggest reason we were putting new meters in was because we knew that the old ones were not accurate, they were not measuring all the water that went through them, and that we were hoping to be able to put some profitability into our water system. And these are very early numbers, but it looks like, like that part of the project's gonna pay off, so.
Okay, Nancy, go back to the May, June, July. How many people received? Do you know generally how many people received an estimate? Let's say, can you call it in a, an upgraded estimate?
I didn't count them, but I would tell you my, my instinct after having processed those, I would say 30 to 40%.
30, 40% every month? I mean, as, as they changed over?
As I, well, yeah. Of all the meters that we changed out, I would say 30 to 40% of them were so far off, you couldn't send a customer a bill under that. And we knew that that was gonna happen and we had actually, at a council meeting, discussed that those customers that were behind, you know, because there was the outside reader that said one thing and the inside meter said another thing, and it's that inside meter, the actual meter itself, that is the official metering. And so we knew that there was going to be some discrepancies and so I found the most fair way to do that.
And that was to take an estimate of the previous two months or?
One month. It, well, my system will calculate what they've, what their average usage is since they've been a customer. And I took that average usage and used that for that one month. And that changeover only occurred in one month.
Otherwise, they would've been billed, those certainly the 40% would've been billed a lot more than what they've ever tried.
Oh, we had, we had a customer that would've got it in a bill for 7 million gallons of water.
Yeah, they just.
And instead of giving everybody heart attacks and making me get yelled at on the phone.
7 million gallons of water. You mean, they actually used 7 million?
It went through the meter, but didn't hit the outside reader that Jerry could see every month.
There was a customer, 7 million gallons more than they paid for.
I think so, yeah. I can go back and go through. I still got all my sheets, but they were huge.
7 million.
Yeah, it was.
Water, so that's over a long period of time, probably.
One year?
A very long period. No, over, over probably since the meter was installed 20 years ago. Or 30 years ago, or whenever that meter was installed. Longtime customer, lifelong customer, you know?
You don't go back that far, do you?
No.
No, no, no.
That's why they didn't do it.
No, no, I didn't. That's why I'm talking about the average that I used, Randy, rather than, because I knew people were gonna have heart attacks and I was gonna get screamed at, and so were you guys.
That just happened for the month?
That the meter changeout occurred.
Okay. And some people's, people had that in May, some in June, and some in July.
Yes.
Okay. Does that include all the large meters, May, June, and July? Or did that occur in August? The big meters, the meters that we, the commercial meters, should I say?
Those were more accurate.
No, but I mean, when did that conversion take place? August?
You know, in those same three months. What do you get something to find out for? I can't tell you what I did.
No, I just, I wondered if you did those all a little bit later. I know we did.
Todd's was the only one that was left outside of those three months.
Okay.
And then you didn't go back in with a two-inch meter at his house, did you? Yeah, he put a smaller meter up there and resized the piping up there.
Well, you know, there's been a lot of concern. And that's, and that's why Dale's here tonight. And I've been talking to, and Jerry's been good enough to work with me on, with Terry Rath. And he can show you examples. Now, I talked to Terry tonight and let's go to, back to Colin Frank. He said Terry went in and read the meter at Colin Frank's house, because of course he owns that house. And he said, "Tonight, it read 4,100 or 4,700 gallons." And you know, Colin was upset last month, and this might just be one of those unique crazy things that happen. Colin was upset last month because he got a bill for 6,000 gallons of water. And he said it was impossible for him to use 6,000 gallons. We talked about the fact, maybe it was the outside hydrant, maybe it was a leaky toilet. That's always discussed. But Terry came up and talked to me before the meeting, and he said he went and read the meter, and the meter.
Up to her.
Well, I mean, I just, I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying, this is a true experience, okay? And the meter read either 4,100 or 4,700. I've been, 41. 4,100 gallons of water used since you turned it back on, since we turned, we turned it back on, okay? So could it be possible that on some of the meters, the gun, I'll call it the gun, is not accurate or?
No.
Could we?
Wait, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. Let me explain how, how this works, because if that says 4,100 on that meter tonight, that means there's 41,000 gallons have gone through that meter.
But that would be impossible.
No, it isn't impossible. What I, what I'm saying is, there is, that meter reads one zero less.
Okay? I get that part.
So the 4,100 is not 4,100, it's actual gallons of 41,000. And that's cumulative, since they've been put in, and it, I don't know what he uses, but.
Well, he, he was shut off until October, the end of September. And so he was, or the, I can't remember, but he was here last month, so would the prior month. He would shut off till then. He got a bill for 6,000 gallons of water that supposedly ran through the meter. So if indeed that reads 41,700 gallons, then there's still something wrong. Right? Correct?
It, no, it won't read that. If they use 6,000 gallons, the difference between the beginning reading and the ending reading will be 600.
No, I mean, you billed out 6,000 gallons.
Right, but the meter reading will be, the difference in those previous and ending will be 600 gallons. And then there's a zero added on for the actual, because that's how the meters work. You have to add a zero, okay?
I get that.
The old ones had all the zeros on them, these do not. And we, we had the owner of Brown Supply that sold us the meters, as well as the representative of the factory that produces the meters, in this office, they spent, after they spent, the installer guy spent a whole day and a half over here troubleshooting the issues, because we had a few things that we had some issues with, right? Paul came over, we troubleshooted all the issues, he took all this back to these people. These two gentlemen came and worked with us and went through all those issues and said, "We've got it fixed and now it's correct. These readings are correct, that zero needs to be added, because otherwise, we're gonna bill everybody in town 500 or 600 gallons, or 300 gallons, or 200 gallons." Nobody uses 200 gallons, you have to have the zero to make it 2,000.
That's fine, but that's.
So that's, the, the question, the, the question is whether or not the water went through the meter. The only person, the city cannot have control of what goes through the meter. You put a brand-new meter in there, state-of-the-art meter, and if you can't trust that that meter is operating correctly, then we wasted $62,000.
We didn't waste $62,000. What I am suggesting is, I have another example, Jerry can chime in when he, when he wants to, or if he doesn't want to, I understand. But Terry up at Senior Citizens, well, up at his rental apartments, his bill has gone up threefold.
We knew that was gonna happen, because that meter's not been accurate for as long as I've been here. We've always thought that. How many people does he have living up there?
He has eight adults.
And how many kids?
One little boy. And the adults are gone during the day. The example I use, and you know, I hate to get into exactly, but the meter is a bigger meter, a commercial meter, I'll call it, and it registers in 100 gallons, correct? And he is standing up there with Craig Heim, staring at the meter. The Craig Heim goes in, turns on the one washer that he has up there. And the meter, and as the washer filled up, the meter spin to two, registered two. Now, I know there's two little different dials and I'm not gonna get into the technicalities of reading them, but two. 200 gallons. So that's when.
It went from zero to two or one to two?
It went from zero to two, because it, Jerry was kind enough to replace the previous new meter, because it was.
And the second meter did the same thing?
Well, I don't, I can't say it did exactly the same thing, but it did do this. This is the second one. This is the second one that registered 200 gallon for filling up a washer.
Well, but here's the other thing you need to know, is they, there's like a little, little ticker in there, okay? And until it hits that last one and flips the number, you may have used 99 gallons until you get to there, and then it's gonna click. It's gonna click that number over, okay? So it doesn't click on every gallon, it's every 100 gallons, right? So when you turn that on, it was a matter of timing.
Dial should be moving, even if it hasn't got to the next 100, that dial moves, there's like a speedometer pointer thing that just moves, and then it, then when it, when it goes over the next 100 gallon is my understanding.
Okay, so, all right, here's, we can cut this really short, okay? Because here's the deal.
Let's not cut it short.
Are we gonna trust our meters, or are we gonna go install all brand-new ones?
No, I don't know. I don't think it needs to.
Are they calibrated?
Yes, they're calibrated from the factory before they got here.
Okay, just, just a minute.
So.
Nancy, please. You know, I think, I think we owe it. Of course, there's gonna be glitches and that sort of thing, but I think we owe it to these people who have complaints. And Dale, I'm gonna let you describe yours real briefly. You are billed for how many gallons of water?
16,700.
Sparky's uses 18,000 gallon?
I don't know, I just read it out.
No, I, that's what, that's what I'm told. Terry Rath is billed now for 19,000 something. It's, you know, I, I'm just saying, there possibly might be a problem. And isn't it incumbent upon us to at least have the guys come back, the technical people come back and explain to us? And I would be there and spend the time to be there, because I think it's that important, of course, to have them explain to us how Dale used 19,000 gallons of water, how Terry Rath's bill has jumped, gallons used, it's. How Terry Rath's bill has jumped, gallons used, it, it's, uh.
Are you aware that industry, industry standards are? They use three thousand gallons per person, per month?
I, that's, the nineteen thousand is only about twenty-five hundred.
So, so if you, if you've got nine people living there, that's twenty-seven thousand gallons. Which would be an industry, that, in the industry, they would look at that and go, that's normal. Whether it is or not for that customer, we can't, we can't know that. I don't know if Dale filled his pool or not.
I, I.
I don't know if the kids left the hose on. We can't know that and we can't, we can't.
I, I know, it's just that we shouldn't be so, uh, defensive to look, to investigate it.
We have what.
Jerry has not been, I agree, I agree.
Well, no, no, let me finish, put in here a little bit. I took his meter, the old one out. Hooked it up to another meter, which I already told you about.
Right.
And they both read just about the same.
Right. I wish he'd called and, you know, let's take him down there and, and have him see it. I'm just, I'm just saying, does it hurt to have these people come back? Uh, Dale, did you fill up your pool? Did the kids leave a hose on?
Not that I know of.
Uh, uh, you know, so our customers are saying, would you please check? And that's all I'm suggesting as a customer. I know you will.
And if, but if, if we determine that, that from our checks, that meter's accurate.
At least we're lucky then though.
But we do that with everyone who calls. I pass everyone on to Jerry, he watches them a couple days and if the, if it's all kinda operating, whether it's. Large or whether it's small, he watches that. We do that with every customer that says a word.
Jerry and I talked too and he, he couldn't have been more helpful, so. But you talked and sometimes that gun doesn't read the bigger meters correctly. You, and, and a good example was Terry Rath, right after we installed the meter. Uh, not a day, day and a half after we installed the meter. Uh, you read a thousand, or you read fifteen hundred gallon on the gun and when we got in the shed, it was actually a thousand.
That's because the gun doesn't.
No, 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 opposite.
Yeah.
It read a thousand on a gun and actually read fifteen hundred in the meter.
Okay, but, so, there is some fallacy with that.
No, that is the way it works and that's the way they explain to us that that is the way it works.
Soon as it gets to, when I read it, it might've been at fourteen hundred, but soon as it gets to fifteen hundred on that thing, it'll read fifteen.
Right, right, I understood that. I understood that, but that's why. At, at whatever time the meters are read, you have to physically go in and look at some of those meters, correct? To get the correct.
You know, you know, like I said, it didn't read that five hundred. Say it didn't read the five hundred this month, but it'll read the five hundred the next time.
Yeah, we don't, we don't go in and, and change the readings, whatever they come out of the radial read is what we build.
I, is, is there any, uh, people who sold us these meters, is there? Is there any harm in asking them to come and address the council? I think it's that important. And I, I'm not a salesman, but a technician.
Yeah, sure, I give rounds play, I gotta come talk to you.
I, I don't know, uh, Dale, what would. Where, tell me what your rea, I know what Terry Rath's reaction is. Uh, you know, there's just no way and, and, uh.
But you, you look at the other end of it, this nineteen thousand doesn't seem to be too overboard for eight adults and one boy. But I just know from my own family over the years.
Sure.
But, you know, he can look at it the other way, maybe if it, if it tripled. He was only paying nine thousand gallons for, for that many for all those years, he got by really cheap. You can look at it that way too.
If indeed that's the case.
But we, we should look, yes.
That's, that's all I'm asking.
But I, I just think that.
We need to cross check it.
Yeah.
You've got your.
That way then they can't come back on us saying we're not doing nothing.
Yeah, we can't, the answer can't be that it's impossible to have any problems. The answer has to be.
We can look into it?
Let us check, let us check, let's take every possible precaution. So that we know absolutely they are right and I, I don't mean to be looking at you Jerry, I'll look at you Nancy.
I, I don't know what to do.
Send it back to the factory and have recalibrated again or.
Or we can have them tested, but who pays for all those tests? That's gonna cost money.
Well, let's.
Keep the people happy though, you can't just.
What is it, what, what does it cost for a test and can we have, can we have these two tested?
Our, our ordinance says that if the customer wants their meter tested, we will send it away and have it tested and if it tests correctly. The customer pays the cost of the test.
That's our way to go. I really do.
And what's, what's that cost?
I don't know, we haven't had that, we, these old meters, we haven't had them tested. I agree that we can't say that there's not a problem. But I'm telling you, we've been through the wringer in the last six months on this stuff.
I know, it is.
And if we can't trust them, we oughta just throw them all away and put the old ones in and scrap it.
That's why, that's, that is not what I'm suggesting at all.
But you guys have gotta trust these.
Well, I will trust them after I know that we've.
Well, then.
We have.
I guess, I guess.
Two, two big, two significant, uh, concerns with these two meters. How we react.
Three.
What's that?
Maybe three.
Yeah, Colin, did you read Colin Frank's, what did it read up there after his complaint?
The next month it was a lot lower. He fixed his leak.
When I read it, there are numbers, I mean, there.
They're just numbers to him.
They'll come up there.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, but I thought we were, we were gonna just kinda see daily for a while.
It was only like two hundred gallons in a couple days. But I don't remember what, if it read forty-one hundred or if it read five thousand, like those numbers I don't remember, I just went by the total.
You know, we say that he fixed his leak, but what I'm getting from a, a customer is, that owns the house, is that there were no leaks. Now Dale checked his house for leaks.
Had a plumber come in?
Had a plumber come in, all I'm asking you guys.
Is it for one week or one month?
My, yeah, my meter does not turn when nothing's running.
No, but it's, this one you said, I never, I didn't know anything about this.
Well, last year was nine, or last month was nine thousand, which I. Look, it's high, but I paid it, but.
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand, I think is outrageous.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about it, but I can come up, take a look at your meter, I didn't know anything about it.
No, no, and I know you didn't, I know you didn't, I, that's, I would just.
And we have no one home during the day. I mean, they're not like someone's there every day.
Or all day, like I said, I use five, six thousand gallons a day too, but you don't wanna go all day either.
Well, and you were in the house the other day and the water softener was running water down the drain.
Oh, I.
All day long.
I understand that.
You guys cannot know what goes on in people's houses. No matter what they say, I can't use this. I'm sorry Dale, I'm not picking on you. When they come and say, there's no way I couldn't have used this. That's why we put a meter in. That's why there's a meter.
But, but Nancy, let's, let's take Colin Frank, six thousand gallon one month and the next month.
I don't care if it's believable or not, it went through the meter. The meters do not move unless something goes through them.
Okay, then where I'm at as a councilperson is I would like to, uh, at least do some follow-up. Uh, check with Brown, whoever supplied the meters, we bought the meters from. Uh, see if there could be any, uh, investigate it, that's what I would like. For Dale King, for the apartments up there. And, uh.
Frank?
Colin Frank, please. Even if, if, if you monitor the meters periodically, uh. And I know that won't necessarily tell us anything, but if there's a spike in usage and it's, I, I don't know. I just don't want to say, the meters are never wrong, that, that's why.
Do you want your meter sent off to be tested?
Well, it depends on what it's gonna cost me.
I don't know what it's gonna cost.
Can we find out what it would cost? Yeah. Please Nancy, I don't mean it personal at all.
Okay, question now, when that water went through Terry Rath's, that washer there and the meter registered a two, would that be twenty or two hundred?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
It went from zero to two.
Zero after that.
From zero to two.
No, the bigger meters start with two zeros. The house will start with one zero.
Okay.
See, the, your house will read by tens and bigger ones read by hundreds.
The apartment buildings all have one meter.
Just one meter.
One water meter.
So they don't know who's using the water or nothing.
No.
And the washing machine, one.
They have a, they have a laundry room, yeah.
Could we, so, can we find out what it would cost to have a meter tested? Can you Jerry or Nancy, whoever does it, check in with Brown Supply, that's the correct company that we bought them from? And, and just explain what kind of feedback we're getting and see if there's anything, uh, we've missed as a council. It's not about you guys personally, what, you know. Is there any step in the process that maybe could have given, given these two meters the hiccup or Colin, or Colin Frank's too? And, uh. And I, and Jerry, what do you think about monitoring those meters? Taking a read. Terry's been taking a read every day at the same time.
I just go up every morning, certain time, eight o'clock or so I get up there. When I gotta read it and he's been averaging about. Six hundred gallons a day and on last week, but I did read it Saturday or Sunday. But there was average about eight hundred gallons, that's because people are home, eight or nine hundred gallons a day then.
So he's on track for eighteen thousand this month.
Yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable, I really don't.
I think Tony's home all day, but I'm not for sure. The back door, I think we have the back door locked, side door I should say.
Well, sooner they have somebody there.
Even on the single adult household, Nancy, can you look to see how many gallons are used on a single adult?
Time you wanna come to.
Depends on who it is.
What time do you leave?
Yeah, because, uh, some go hard, I think, the guy who moved into, Terry Rath used this example, the guy who moved into.
Six thirty, quarter seven.
Unisris's mother.
I'll read it, I'll, I'll take a visual, look at it, see what.
Twelve hundred gallons of water used. At where at?
Okay.
Unisris's house.
It, it really is dependent on how people live in their house. It really is totally dependent.
You, you have to see the bills.
Are we down with the water meters?
No, she's good. No, I'm not. Terry can line it all out for you.
Okay, we'll go on with, uh, consider the holiday lighting contest.
So do we have a decision on the?
She's gonna look into it, I think, right Nancy?
I mean, you're gonna find out what the cost of checking in on a meter or checking a meter is gonna be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Same as last year, the holiday lighting contest?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good thing.
The prizes last year were a hundred and seven, a hundred seventy-five and fifty.
Maybe that matters.
I think that's fine.
And it goes toward their utility though, yeah.
Oh, well, I could say that lights a lot of beer.
Yeah. You don't, can't qualify anyway.
Oh, okay.
It's right, we could drive past your house.
You need a motion on the, uh, holiday lighting thing?
Yep.
How many can motion include the holiday lighting program, same, and keep it the same as last year?
Motion by Cindy.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jane to keep the, uh, prize award as last year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Date placed for second meeting in two thousand fourteen.
Yes, we are hosts in January. And it is Van's turn to have it.
Oh, okay.
We had it at Dolly's last year. Um, and we normally do this on Thursday. In Auburn because of church night and others that work on Wednesday night that like to attend these meetings, so. The Thursday, the second Thursday is, is January ninth.
January ninth.
Yeah.
January ninth, Van's Cafe.
When's the chief's, when's the chief's feed?
That is, just a minute, I can tell you.
The third Thursday?
The chief's feed, whoops, I gotta get into January, just a minute. New, new computer, I'm struggling with this, I gotta tell you. Um, is the fifteenth on, on, uh, Wednesday, the fifteenth. And I confirm that with Randy Booth, that's how I can speak authoritatively about that.
Don't they typically have it on Wednesdays?
Yeah.
Lead meetings?
Well, each town is able to decide whether they want Wednesday or Thursday. But see, Wednesday is church night. And Janelle likes to go and she works Wednesday night, so we've, we've, for the last four or five years, had it on Thursday night. Church night for me on Wednesday night too, and so, if, if that's all right, I'm gonna write down unanimous consent.
Or it's the next meeting, Nancy.
The next one is Thursday night at Wall Lake. And they have a.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try and go to that one, at, that one.
At the Hay Loft. And they have a gentleman from the Iowa Economic Development Authority there to speak about. Um. Encouraging new business in small communities, so it should be kind of an interesting program. So Cindy, want, I can RSVP, they want RSVPs.
Verdi?
Tomorrow, Verdi, okay? Randy?
Can I get back to you tomorrow?
Yeah, I need it tomorrow morning though, yeah.
What time does it start at six?
Six thirty.
Have Swin's here first.
First.
Geez, I'm a dit.
Okay, you're gonna have to, did I have a motion on the meeting this month in January?
I'm just gonna put unanimous consent because it's not that big of a deal.
No motion needed for that one?
Not unless somebody is in a disagreement over something.
Okay, budget work, do you have a community improvement plan? Oh, here it is.
It's once again time to drag this thing out and review what we've, I didn't, I just printed it off, I really didn't spend any time, um. Updating it. For what we've accomplished or not accomplished.
What's the significance of the single X and the double X?
I don't know.
The priority?
They really got it done, or it's a real priority.
Yeah, I think that was it.
Emphasis.
Yeah. And I don't.
I did notice in the library, the floors are really bad shape. They really do need to be refinished. I just seen that up there.
Yeah, and they don't wanna refinish them, they don't know what they wanna do.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they're thinking they wanna put all new flooring down. And they think they wanna put laminate flooring down and it's not gonna hold up to the sand and the gravel on that floor any better than the varnish did. So I don't know, and the chairs and the, I don't know what they're gonna do.
And they're rolling around with the carts, but, would be heavy on it, wouldn't it?
I don't think they move those very much. It's more the chairs and the kids and. And that, that floor in there takes a beating guys, all the kids in there.
And the age.
Age of it.
Huh?
Public terraza.
Oh, that'd be expensive.
It'd be so noisy, it'd be expensive and noisy. But, yeah, so it, library board will eventually decide what they want and then they're gonna come and hit you up for money, I'm sure.
Since we're missing two council people, can we, uh, take this under review and deal with it at?
We'll deal with it next month as well.
Okay.
That's, if, you don't, you don't maybe remember, but I drag this out usually in October or November and we, we talk about this every month until. Until we start setting pri, budget priorities. Because what happens is we go, okay, let's review what we had on our list. And we start thinking about what to put on it and we don't think about everything or, or we think about it tonight and then you go out and look around the community and go. Oh, maybe we should put this on, so. It's just one of those things we just kinda bring out and start talking about. So if you don't wanna, if that's enough for tonight, I'm good with that, but.
Jerry, you'd mentioned something about the, uh, water plant, the, I, I won't call it the water plant building, but that little.
Pump house?
Pump house.
Yeah, how's that going?
Well, he, you kinda had an idea about something, remember?
Yeah.
Did that?
Going to go to, uh. Going to go to, uh, lake view concrete, see if I can just get square form, just set right down on there and have cement top right on it.
You know, instead of.
I know what you mean, yeah, I know what you mean.
You haven't had a chance to get over it yet?
I gotta ready, kinda go down and get a piece of measurement before I can really.
We've been putting new meters in. You guys, this, this really, guys, was a really big project for Jerry and I.
Repair voucher, we'll put double X on that for two thousand fourteen.
It might not help, it's been on this list for eight or nine years now. I think we can cross the scoreboard off at the ball field.
Did you get those poles down and lights down yet?
No, I'm just curious.
Do we need additional fencing at dugouts?
No, we don't need any, we really don't need any of that stuff up there.
If the light poles are coming out, do we need to bury the power line?
No.
You can cross off the ball field, I think.
Pretty much, at this point.
What is the terminus sign?
That's, that thing up there that we wanted to put up at the end of the, at the stop sign up here, top picture.
Oh, yeah, that would be neat.
Yeah. I don't think it's ever gonna get to happen, but we won't quit hoping.
Contact Roy and see what he says.
Who?
Roy.
No, that's not the issue. Problem is getting property to put it on.
Well, that's Roy who wants to buy his little farm.
I, I tried that, it didn't work, that one didn't fly.
Put it in the fence room, see what the state says.
They won't let us.
Don't even ask.
No, we're not touching that, are we Jerry? There's too much fiber optic in that fence line, we aren't touching that. Anything else, and I, I also put in here just for your information, and take home with you, I guess, to put on your calendars. We'll have our first formal budget work session at our first meeting in January on the fourteenth. This is kind of the schedule we'll use, the second, we always usually have a second work, work session, and. We usually try to do that on a Monday night, and I always have a conflict with the Monday night in January, and I don't know what night that is yet, so hopefully I will know.
So you got it as the fourteenth of January or?
That's our regular council meeting night, the second meeting may be the twenty-first, or it may be the twenty-eighth, I'm not sure yet. Or we may pick a completely different night, I don't, that's up to you guys, but, so that one's to be determined, the rest of these are, are regular council meeting nights, so you don't have to. That's all I have for that for tonight.
Okay. So we're gonna be public, uh, budget work calendar?
Yep.
Okay, public forum. Dale? Okay, well, thank you for coming. Okay, uh, end discussion items, public works.
I was gonna bring up that thing up there, but there we go. The water plant.
Oh, what we were just talking about?
I jumped, I jumped, I jumped, sorry.
I wasn't listening, what Jane?
Oh, it was the pump house thing, and I, I'd already bought it.
I'm in a world of my own.
No, no, it's.
Yes, I am.
I'm jumping around.
Uh, city per.
Um, back to the SAC City League meeting, at the December meeting, they usually have an auction with the people that are there of items provided by each community. And then the monies, money raised goes to, last year they spent the money to, um, purchase some. Display materials for travel shows, that members of the group took to like the Omaha Travel Show and things like that, what they're gonna do with the money this year, I don't know. Anybody wanna take over putting together a, something the city can donate to the auction?
Should just be their t-shirts or cookbooks?
We did cookbooks last year, so, we don't wanna do that.
Put a little sticker in your second edition.
You mean the green ones? The bicycle ones, no, no, the car show ones, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a hundred of those left. We have plenty of inventory.
Is there any old, uh, uh, Sasquatch, or whatever you call it? We sold it twenty twelve.
You know, if there are any of those remaining, they left Auburn with Rachel, I don't know.
They would've been nice to have.
She never turned them back in, so I don't know, but I don't think anybody wants our old Auburn t-shirt, I mean. The cities go, like SAC City will bring a basket like this that'll have beer bread in it, and it'll have, they'll go downtown and each, I mean, it's really huge. We, we have usually sent, um, like a gift certificate from Vans, we've sent a gift certificate from Dolly's. Sparkies, we've done sparkies.
Just a question, anybody bring any antiques, just regular antiques rather than junk? I might have something myself.
I haven't seen any really good antiques, but like John Westergaard makes these really nice homemade wooden jewelry boxes, and. I know that there's a couple of those kinds of things that are coming.
Like, we couldn't use city funds to buy, buy a gift certificate, could we, or?
We have.
Why don't we do that? And do you get one from Vans or Dolly's?
I could have delivered to that people's shelf.
We did Dolly's last year, I think.
Oh, a gift certificate, edition and cookbook?
Yeah, and we gave, um.
Well, how much money did you give?
Oh, I, I think we bought a twenty dollar gift certificate is all.
I'm good with that, if, if there's no problem in using tasksters' money for the, buy the gift certificate.
Comes out of the, out of the council budget line item for meeting expense.
Comes out of your pay for one month, you'll get paid for that.
Yeah, there you go.
I catch your cell. Okay.
Okay. In, in, on the table, those red and white forms are municipal leadership academy registrations, Jane is going to sign up again and go. Cindy, I think you did most of those, but they've changed them around a little bit. So if you wanna think about, the first one.
I need to know by.
Like, right, soon, because the first one at Storm Lake is like the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I see that.
Which is next week, so.
Oh, it's on a Thursday, four to eight.
Yeah, in Storm Lake.
How much you know tomorrow?
Let me know tomorrow, Randy, are you interested?
Wonder what, did you find out when we were going to the Omaha City?
Not for sure, but we're leaning towards Friday, their city office wasn't open yesterday, so, I need to pin this down tomorrow morning because their group is meeting tomorrow night.
What?
Wasn't Too Medium open yesterday?
I meant today, did I say yesterday?
Yeah.
Verdi's rubbing off on me. Um, just, I guess for your information, I will, I guess I'm, I'm going to go a little early because I wanna see what they're doing, the Trees Forever Visioning Program has their wrap-up luncheon, and where they all show, like we did years ago. And I've been asked to speak on a panel at their, at their event Friday afternoon, where I got to send a whole bunch of photos. No, no, this is in Ames. Trees Forever, they're, the end of their visioning for projects for this year, they have a big event where they show off all their projects, and Trees Forever provides a luncheon and. And gets people to come in, and I've been asked to serve on a panel and, and speak about Auburn's visioning project and what we got done, so that's Friday afternoon in Ames.
That's this Friday afternoon, so you'll be gone.
I'm gonna leave a little early, I, I don't, I'm gonna go down and have lunch with them, I'll be here for a while Friday morning, but I'm gonna go for lunch. And Tuesday, the nineteenth, I will be out of the office attending our budget training session.
Where's that at Nancy?
Atlantic.
Okay, next item, SAC Condesolid Waste Board.
Uh, very short meeting last month, um, in fact, we didn't have a quorum, so, we had a quorum for moments and then lost it for him. So, it was maybe twenty minutes long, and, um, the only thing that's really pending, the building's been paid for, the only thing that's really pending is the last bill that we got from, um. The recycling center, and there's some issues with that, so.
For the quorum, one way to cover that is all those presidents constitute a quorum.
Yeah, I don't think that's in the bylaws though. So not much to report, nothing.
Okay. Emergency Management Board.
Yeah, I went to it, I, I went for you.
Awesome, way to go Randy.
You didn't make it, did you? And Positius told you they bought a trailer and some tent, and get on to it, for emergency use, and you're still working on nine one one ago.
Two lines, you can't, decontamination shelter.
They bought all that already. And they bought a trailer full loaded with everything.
And so that's for countywide use, correct?
Yep.
Is it, and it's housed up at SAC, is that it, or?
They didn't say where they parked, but it's okay.
Sheriff's Department.
Hi, you saw the summary of the report that we got on the Sheriff's Department, I was talking Nancy, but to this, I hope this before the meeting started. You know how we used to get the more detailed reports? I'm hoping if you guys feel the same way, we can ask them to do the little extra legwork and paperwork it, it takes to get the full report. Is that enough for an official request? I'll feel the same way, okay, good, all right.
Okay. Well, Mayor and Council, Mayor doesn't have any report, how about the Council?
The only thing I wanted to bring up was, um, the agreement, the lease with Tanner, uh, for the lot, the extra lot to put his, uh, equipment on, as it rotates out, and he's, he uses it. I was of the understanding at the last meeting that we provided that lease, and in exchange, not only for allowing him to put that rotating equipment up there, I'll say. Is that he would clear the street, um, the city property on the west side of Martin's Welding. And, so for example, the auger that's been sitting on the city street for the last two or three weeks, would, it would be up at the lot, when, when the lease is done, it would be up at the lot, it would not, there would not be equipment sitting. On the side of the city street or on the, the sidewalks, and is that, and that, anything that was not equipment to be worked on was like stacking wood and that sort of thing. Would be moved to Martin's or Janelle's lot there, behind the house, am I understanding that correctly?
And the, uh, the property on lease is that between the gun shop and Dave's house?
Yeah.
Or is that further south?
Between the gun shop and Dave's house.
Right out on First Street.
So they can keep an eye on it, that's what they were worried about.
And easier access.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we were trying to, trying to do whatever we could to keep Tanner in town as well as making it accessible, but in exchange for that, we expecting to clear the street and the sidewalk there.
Yeah, I noticed that one crater's been there for a couple, three months now.
Yeah, I, okay, do, do we need a separate agreement, does he understand that, if he doesn't understand that, that, then maybe we should put something just. It's always a good policy to put it in writing so that he understands in a very neutral way that.
Let's put it in writing as a letter from the mayor.
Perfect.
Is it rubber stamped?
It's rubber stamped.
Okay.
I have one thing for discussion right here, we have a gatekeeper over for the dump area, and I think we probably should give them a, a gratuity, you know, at the end of the season, when we lock up the gate for the winter. Something to think about for the December meeting.
Yeah, I think that's totally perfect, and it's filling up fast, isn't it?
It hasn't been closed for five, six days, but.
Does the lock work?
Yes.
I'm looking to see if the gate removed.
They didn't close it, they didn't close it over the weekend, or at night, over the weekend?
We wouldn't close it all last week.
But I don't see any.
Well, hold on that.
After I left you the note though, that lock works, she told me she couldn't get it locked.
Brand new panel lock on it.
Did you give her a key?
It's the same kind, same one.
Okay, I bet she doesn't know that though, I'll make sure she knows that.
So has there been any other dumping down there lately?
They should move the leaves tomorrow, I'll tell ya. That's where it gets, it gets underneath the leaves.
Yeah, you see, pick up loads of leaves going down there and.
Terry's been hauling a lot of leaves, but he doesn't have anything.
I can think of stop, stop!
Okay, any other discussion items? Randy? Randy? And Jane, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven forty-five. What the hell, a long meeting.
Well, congratulations to the council.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Congratulations Cindy and Randy.
Yes.